Okay, it appears to be seven PM and I'd like to call to order this June first meeting of the Ferrisburg Planning Commission. And I would like to remind my fellow planning commissioners that when you speak, please speak clearly so that out there in the net land, others can hear what you're saying. And if you come to the podium to speak, speak clearly into the microphone there. Could we have a roll call?
Chairman Reifel.
Present.
Commissioner Scholberg. Commissioner Weber.
Here.
Commissioner Tergo.
Here.
Commissioner Hawley.
Here.
Commissioner Carlson.
Here.
Commissioner Jones.
Present.
Thank you. Someone want to make a motion about Regina?
So, I move to excuse Regina Scholberg.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. We excuse Commissioner Scholberg from this meeting. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Consideration for approval, the June first agenda. Craig has dutifully prepared an agenda for our meeting tonight. Are there any changes or corrections or anything that anyone would like to make to this agenda? And if not, Chair would entertain a motion to accept the agenda as prepared.
Some moved.
It's been moved and seconded. We accept the agenda for tonight's meeting as prepared. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, we've accepted it. And now let's consider for approval, the May fourth meeting minutes as printed. Craig has, as usual, done a wonderful job here preparing the minutes of that meeting. And Chair will entertain any additions, changes, corrections to the May fourth minutes as prepared. And if there are no changes, Chair will also entertain a motion to accept them as prepared.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. We accept the minutes of the May fourth meeting as prepared. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? We've accepted them. Boy, we're moving along here. This is good. Okay, public comments. It's customary at the planning commission meeting to give members of the public an opportunity to share any thoughts that they may have with us, both early in our meeting and near the end of the meeting. And if you, we have a public hearing scheduled for tonight. If you have, if you're here to say something about the public hearing, I'd ask that you defer your comments about that until we have a public hearing. But anything else that you'd like to share with us, I'll invite you to come to the podium, give us your name, your address, and share your thoughts with us, please. I don't see anyone jumping up to share thoughts. So, it's seven oh three and I'd like to close the public comment section of the meeting. And let's now move to item number six. The public hearing to consider request by Dan Leclair for a special use permit and for a site plan approval to construct an addition at four one one Carmen Drive pursuant to section nine one twenty E of the City of Ferrisburg ordinance, parcel number seventy oh three sixteen one seven three oh two one. Is there anyone here from this proposal? Please come up and tell us about it.
Well, I am the owner, Dan Leclair. We are trying to expand the building to get into RV repair. Need to figure so we can hit the big RV shop. Busting at the seams as it is right now. I got one other guy working for me right now and he just...
About this request, but I would like to thank you for attempting to expand your business in Ferrisburg.
Yeah.
So, we appreciate that.
Yeah, thank you.
So, thank you, yes. Thank you very much. And we may want to talk to you when, when we discuss the issue here later. Thank you. Would anyone else like to share any thoughts with us about this request? Okay, not seeing anyone wanting to share anything with us about the request. I'd like to close the public hearing at seven oh five. We may be out of here by seven fifteen. No, no, we won't. Okay, so colleagues, we're now going to have a discussion and take action if appropriate to recommend the city council to approve or not approve a special use permit and for a site plan approval to construct an addition at four one one Carmen Drive pursuant to section nine one twenty E of the City of Ferrisburg zoning ordinance, parcel number seventy oh three sixteen one seven three oh two one. Colleagues, what are your thoughts? I got a chance to talk with Mr. Leclair before the meeting here. We discussed a lot of things and he said the main thing he would like to do is, have permission to get one more tattoo. But, no, I've driven by his business a couple of times out there and it's, and drove around the parking lot as a matter of fact, to take a look. And it's, first of all, it's clean. It's everything's nicely parked in there compared to one of your neighbors down the street. But, it's the end of Carmen and there's, he's got space available there and his business is growing. And it looks like it fits, fits everything except David had some, some recommendations with, with special, special conditions attached to it also. So, we should talk about those too because they're minimal. I'm not sure they've been conveyed to Mr. Leclair up until now. If he knows about these.
Yes, he does.
He does, okay. And I guess a question would be, do you have any problem with any of those? The lighting or the dumpster or...
Please come to the microphone.
There's an existing dumpster there currently. Trying to stay aware of that. Got the drawings from the salt, land and water. Sign there, there's, it looks like a three sided red, so outlined by one of the sheds there, that is the existing dumpster. That, so that's gonna, gonna stay there, obviously. Put a door on it. I just have it in the past because the dumpster guys were there at certain times when I wasn't and wouldn't open the door for me. But if it wasn't open, they would... So, I'd have to call them back because it was an object or on the wall or something in the way from them actually taking care of it. So, that's why I don't have a front on the dumpster right now.
So, they don't have a regular day that they come?
They do, but it would be like either eight o'clock in the morning or three o'clock in the afternoon or sometimes it was even earlier. And if I'm not there opening gate, they wouldn't, my trash, I'd have to call them, say trash.
I think that's probably not a good arrangement if you have to call them back.
Yeah.
But maybe what you could do is the evening before, the day of scheduling, open it up then and, or at least unlock it or, I mean, I don't know how, what kind of opening is required. It's just, because you don't have a door on there now, it doesn't appear.
No, it's just a three sided enclosed.
But from the street, you can see the dumpster sitting there.
Correct.
And I think that's what we're trying to get around.
Yeah, yep.
So...
If I can put a door on it and just open it the night before, fine.
I mean, even if it's just a door that swings, they wouldn't open it?
No, because it would be lashed and, and they would literally drive by and take a picture. So, sometimes I, so there'd be times where I'd have like customer that would, would park something there. They would take a picture of it, they'd drive by. Door was closed, they would, would drive by in the morning on the street, look, they'd take a picture. And then I'd be, my trash was still full. It's just a pain. But yeah, we can do a door and I'll just open it the night before.
I think that would be a, a good way to comply with what we're sort of hoping for here. These trash people don't want to get out of their trucks, number one.
No.
And that's why every container is designed to stay in the truck. It's a one man operation and therefore it doesn't have a door opener on the front of it.
Exactly, yeah. Yep.
Unless it's a crash, a crash bar, I guess.
Yeah.
But...
But no, that's fine, we can do that. Couple of other things were the exterior lighting. Is that one of them on there? So, I'm working with the engineer right now. He's getting all of the lights put up on his design, which I should have those stamped drawings in a couple of weeks. And I spoke to him. But the type of lighting we're gonna use is, we're gonna do, what's there on the building currently, we'll do three recessed in the soffit above each garage door. Picture there, that faces straight down. And then the peak of the north side of, of the building will be farm light. That's what we need more, we'll add more.
One thing that we don't have, that we normally have is the drawings of the sides of the building that you're gonna add.
Correct, yeah, so he's working on that right now. The engineer's actually designing all that right now.
So, that's still in process?
That's still in process, yeah. Like I started that with him back in April and gotten behind and he just came a couple of days ago to do his extra measurements or whatever he needed and I did it today because but I talked to him and he said, two weeks from now, we should have drawings.
I think we, we would like to have that, to see that.
Oh, it, it kind of says heights and stuff on that one that makes, helps it all. Fifty by sixty in the back at six, ceiling, whole building.
Size is fine.
Yeah, yeah.
There's any problem there.
Yep. So, I think the other one was the appearance.
Yeah, the siding material that you're...
So, existing is steel. All the other stuff, the addition is gonna be steel. It'll all be, you know, painted to match and it'll also be a steel roof. I can keep it all the same front, I'm only going out, you know, twenty feet side. I don't... All the other buildings around, they don't have any other, they'll just, I figured I don't know color yet, but it'll probably be gray dark black, something like that. It's not gonna be red or white.
Painting the entire building to match or are you just painting the addition?
No, it'll paint the whole area. Yep, so it'll all match. It all looks like that. And then I think there was another one for landscaping, I believe. So, with, with what we're adding, I don't know where landscape would, because we're adding in parking in front of the new twenty foot addition. And my, my plan was, was to do the parking cement end block for the parkers and then just like some potted plants or something in the front, just to add like a wall, like a nature wall. Other than that, that tree, that big, there's a big pine tree of some kind, that's gonna stay. Don't want any grass because I don't want to have to maintain it. It'll probably just be like rock around there. Obviously, I gotta keep it hydrated there. Either rock or wood chip it.
New parking spaces are on what's grass right now.
Correct, yeah.
What's the surface gonna be there?
Concrete.
I'm sorry.
Cement, concrete?
Concrete, okay, that's good.
So, if I can ask for a vision on that.
I think there can be some leniency with that. It's just making sure it looks good, but sounds like, yeah.
Yeah, I did, I did drive by and to, you probably, if you have cameras, I drove in and drove out.
Yeah.
But I personally with that, it's more of a destination location. I'm not as concerned with the landscaping requirements as maybe some other locations. So, that would be my feeling on that.
This is right next door to her planks, backyard.
Yeah.
And the, and the tank farm. Yeah, both attractive nuisances.
It'll look good, you know, obviously I'm neighbors to, you know, the nicest place there.
Neighbor to the east is very nice, his facilities, yes. So, any other thoughts, colleagues?
Elevation for what?
Oh, that, that, we already covered that.
Okay.
Yeah, that was the buildings. It says building elevation should be provided, but it sounds like your engineer's already working on that.
Mr. Chair and he, they talked about fire department, fire chief is doing it.
Yeah.
And...
Yeah, I spoke to Mike yesterday and he...
Mike signed the third sheet. Fire chief signed the third sheet.
Another neighbor of yours.
So, we do have city, city departments that are...
Fire chief's signed off on it, building inspector signed off on it, and the public service supervisor signed off on it. And the city engineer had no concerns.
Okay.
Are we comfortable in making a motion to accept this contingent on provision, provision of the architectural drawings and so forth? How do you feel about it? Do we want to talk about it some more? Go here or not? Probably should. No, I'm ready.
I think I'd be comfortable as, as long as, yeah, we, we have that provision of the architectural drawings.
Should we read this in or not? Craig?
It's not necessary to read it in, you might just want to read the recommendations from Dave.
Sure, okay. This is recommendations from our consultant, Dave Kerosek. The site plan meets most applicable zoning requirements. However, a waiver from the planning commission is needed for the building appearance requirements of section five sixty. And that's what we're, we've just given them a waiver. The planning commission must also determine if additional plantings are appropriate for the front yard area to bring the site closer to compliance. If the planning commission addresses appearance and landscaping, I recommend approval of the special land use and site plan amendment with the following conditions. Number one, provide the location of exterior site lighting, including specification of the height, type of fixture, and light slash glare containment capability. Number two, demonstrate compliance with screening requirements if a dumpster exists on the site or is proposed. And number three, secure approvals from all applicable city departments. And we've gotten, we've obtained number three, we've got all the required approvals. So, I think the motion should, should say, what, we need the site, the site plans, drawings. We are making a pass on the landscaping requirement and we're asking for a gate on the dumpster enclosure. Is that what we're saying, folks? Mr. Chairman? Yes. I recommend that we recommend the city council that we approve the special use permit and site plan approval with the following conditions that you just said, yeah.
Does that include the no stone stuff on the side of the building as well?
I think there does.
Yeah.
Because you're gonna, you're going to repaint the whole thing and it's all gonna look uniform.
A second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. We recommend favorably on this request. Is there any additional discussion? If not, let's call the motion. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? It's passed unanimously. Congratulations. Yes.
One more thing, can I get the name of the inspe, actually the inspector, so I can give that to the engineer so he can call and coordinate? Okay. And then when I get my, my drawings, who should I hand them? Okay.
It all flows through Craig. And thanks again for staying in Ferrisburg and expanding here. All right. Let's move to agenda item number eight. Discussion and to take action if appropriate to approve, not approve, a request filed by Sue Hafner to construct a driveway that deviates from the regulation of zoning ordinance, section three one sixty, by constructing a driveway with a two foot six inch setback from the north and south property lines instead of the required three foot setback from property lines. Parcel is described as parcel number seventy oh three fifteen two two seven oh three one, commonly known as one six one seven five Harbor Point Drive. So, is Ms. Hafner here or anyone else to speak to this? Okay, please come to the microphone, tell us who you are here.
Because I live right by...
No, please give us your name and your address.
Kathleen Reister, one six one eight five Harbor Point Drive.
It's, want to hear what we say and...
Yeah, I, I don't quite understand what... That maybe they were available.
They're, they're gonna widen the current stone driveway and my understanding is it's gonna be paved from what's coming here, but they want a flare near the street and that would expand the width from eight feet to ten feet. At, at the street, it'd be like thirteen feet or something, but the main driveway going back would be ten feet rather than the current eight feet. Well, I guess with no one here to present the case, we're free to sit here and talk about it, so...
We're glad you're here because this is how you educate yourself, you know? Yeah, we're glad you're here.
Thank you, yeah.
I don't, I, I, I really don't have any, you know, opinion either way, as long as it doesn't hurt my tree. That setback, going to, going to, other than the three. For my tree neighbors to also.
And you own and chasing property along this drive? Yeah, okay.
I'm on the corner.
Okay.
I don't know if you knew... Their old house. So, my only thing is I don't want...
This is, she's already got a fifteen foot easement there that she owns. Actually, that easement, she owns that. So, it's just, just expanding it by a half, a foot on either side for easement. And it, it stays within the easement, still two and a half feet away from the edge for property line.
So, it's all right with me.
Thank you.
I'm Joe Lyons, one six eight five seven Virginia Avenue. I'm just curious why this item is on the agenda for the planning commission when it appears to be more of a zoning issue and perhaps I'm wondering why it, why your commission is being burdened with this and it's not being sent to the zoning administration for adjudication.
The zoning ordinance requires any deviation from the standards of a driveway to be reviewed by the planning commission.
Okay, I wasn't aware of that, so I've learned something tonight. Thank you very much.
Dave Land here, one six one nine one Harbor Point Drive. We're the house just on the left of Sue's driveway. We've been neighbors for over thirty years. I have no problems with Sue. My only concern is, I, I read through the construction, talks about twelve inches of fill sand, eight inches of asphalt, million, eight minutes. Gets us up twenty four inches unless they dig down. I just want to make sure ones blend into that driveway. I don't know how we clarify that here, but if, is there a way to get that in the record so that that can happen?
An unusual situation there. I'm, I'm, I live in Harbor Point as well.
Yeah.
Know exactly where you live. Unusual situation in that she has the fifteen foot property that she owns, but she has to cut across a quarter of your property, right? At the end it flares because that, the BLP can, light poles in the way. You can't go straight, that's why this thing angles a little bit. But anyway, it's, it's an interesting situation. I, I know Sue Hafner because her daughter went to school with, with my daughters in this building as a matter of fact, but then years and years ago. Anyway, so I did get a chance to talk to her a little bit about it too and, and I can see where, right now it's pretty level down there. There's not really any natural drain that I could tell. So, it's, that would be a good, a good question because I can see you don't want it crowned in there to make it look, so, but even if it did, the runoff would only be from half the road going one way and half going the other way.
Yeah, well, my concern is drainage and...
Exactly.
It's all leveled out, runs in with everything.
I know what you mean, right? And that could be a condition I, something to look at. It might have to come up a little bit, only because of fill, but I could, I understand. You don't want a big crown there.
Any questions?
Anyone else? Yeah? Wasn't really a public hearing, but we listened to the public. Okay, as we always are prone to do. Okay, so what do we say, folks? Well, I'll start out again because I, as I say, I know Sue Hafner from going way back. I drove down there Tuesday, I think it was, and I, I turned around just before I got to her driveway at the end and I came back partway and I was looking at my maps and who appears beside my car but Sue Hafner. So, we rolled the window down and we talked for about half an hour about what, what, what her involvement with the property was. For those who don't know, she was married to a dentist, now deceased, and his license, personalized license plate was DR two TH. I thought that was clever as could be. So, anyway, that's, we, old people remember things like that. Anyway, it's very unique and is referred to as a piece of flag, a flag lot, except it's a double flag lot as far as I can tell, which is highly unusual. She owns those three pieces back there, two of them on the lake, one which used to have a house on, doesn't anymore. So, I think she said thirteen different pieces of property back up her, but, her easement, her property there, one of which is this lady here who just spoke up, who's right at the end, which would be right on Harbor Point Drive and where the driveway goes in. Mr. Landier's on the left side as you drive in. You've got a long lot there too. You realize how long that was till I saw this, but anyway, Harbor Point was laid out crazy back in those days, as you all well know. So, anyway, it, it, it makes total sense. She lives alone back there, wants to be able to get out in the wintertime and everything. Big sense for plowing and everything. And I think Mr. Landier taking into account what he said about the elevations at the end, I think is important. Going all the way back's not so much, but right at the end, at the driveway, where it cuts across his property especially.
I, I did take a drive over there and I guess my question was, so is that a shared drive with that one six one eight seven?
No. No. She, no, no, that's, that's where she lives.
Okay, that, okay.
That, that's, that's where the house is. Before you get there is a toy barn on the right hand side, full of boats.
Okay.
And she lives in the house on the left lot. The right lot, she owns the right lot also.
Okay.
And that's vacant. So those are all three, her, three of her properties. What I should do is, uh, read what our consultant says about this. Okay. Here's the overview. An applicant requests a deviation for a new driveway that does not comply with the city's side setback requirements. The driveway is proposed to be constructed along a narrow property extension from the home site to Harbor Point Drive. The property owner owns three contiguous parcels as identified in the aerial inset proposal. Due to the narrow nature of the property extension to the public street, the applicant is requesting a reduction of the driveway setbacks from three feet to two and a half feet. This reduction would allow for a ten foot driveway centered in the fifteen foot wide portion of the property for a length of three hundred thirty feet. The applicant also requests the setbacks to be reduced further at the apron of the drive connecting at the street to allow for a fourteen foot wide flare. The driveway cross-section includes a twelve inch, twelve inches of sand, eight inches of asphalt millings, and three inches of asphalt pavement. Zoning. Applicable zoning requirement is shown below. Section three one sixty C point two point A point one point I. Unless other, otherwise provided for, a driveway and any connected pad shall be at least three feet from a side lot line. Deviations. Deviations to the driveway requirement for a single and two-family homes may be approved subject to site plan review and approval by the Planning Commission based on consideration of the following factors. An approved deviation, excuse me, will be minimum ness- necessary to adequately and reasonably address the difficulty caused by strict compliance with the driveway requirement. Number one. The requested deviation will not negatively impact adjacent property or significant natural features on the site. Comment. An aging driveway already exists within the fifteen foot wide property extension. The area is primarily cleared and developed. An extra foot total of impervious surface beyond what the ordinance would allow is not anticipated to negatively impact adjacent properties and any significant natural resources. Number two. The requested deviation will not be detrimental to the health, safety, and welfare of adjacent property owners and residents. Comment. The driveway replacement is not anticipated to significantly impact adjacent landowners' health, safety, and welfare. Maintaining a two and a half foot strips along both sides of the asphalt drive surface will allow stormwater drainage and separation from property lines. The proposed driveway will be in the same location as the current one and the ten foot width will allow for easier access to the home by passenger vehicles, delivery vehicles, and emergency services. Number three. The requested deviation will not impact traffic visibility or cause safety concerns. Comment. The setback reductions will not impact traffic visibility or safety. Number four. The requested deviation will improve the existing parking arrangement on the site. Comment. Not applicable. Number five. The requested deviation will improve the aesthetics of the site. Comment. The driveway will replace an aging and narrow driveway surface and will improve the site. Number six. The requested deviation results from a unique shape or configuration of the lot or land, the placement of the existing dwelling or garage, or a unique circumstance involving the occupants of the dwelling. Comment. A narrow property extension to the public right of way is a unique characteristic that limits the width of the driveway and setbacks. Recommendation. Based on the narrow nature of the property extension and the reasonable driveway width requested, I recommend approval of the driveway setback deviation for two and one half setbacks, uh, that, two and a half probably should be foot setbacks on each side of the proposed driveway and reduce setback at the right of way for a fourteen foot driveway flare. You may. Only way to get in there. Like, if you come up afterwards, I'll show you an, an aerial view of the site. You'd see the three properties. Colleagues, what are your thoughts?
I think it's a reasonable request. My only hesitation is just making sure that it's a gradual slope and that it's this gentleman.
So, here, I entertain the motion to, um, approve this. This doesn't go to city council, we're, we're the final deciders here. Uh, approve the request, but we want to say something about not creating a, a mountain here on this new street, so. So, how much, it's, uh, twelve inches of sand, eight inches of asphalt millings, and three inches. How many, we got twelve? We got twenty-three inches of, uh, construction materials there, so. Won't show up until you get to, Mr. Landier's property there. He's talking about the end where, where the, the, uh, feathers into his property, which is now pretty level there. It looks nice. So it's only the end, the rest of it, you do want it that high. You know, for, for snow melt, plowing, and everything else. Because it doesn't affect anybody else's property. At the very end. Um, no, even more, that's even more than that. It goes all the way to her house.
Correct. The driveway would just go in that flag parcel, parcel that's fifteen feet wide. So those houses to the, to the south are about a hundred foot frontage, so those houses are three hundred feet.
Excuse me. Property must be about five hundred feet deep. I'd like to clarify one, one thing, and that is Mr. Landier's talking about essentially from where your house to the road. Is where it, it's, it's, it's nice and level in there now. But if it was crowned somewhat beyond that, it wouldn't affect your drainage or the appearance or something. No. It's, it's got a, I'm sure they're going to take some driveway existing out. And it's so that the crown's not going to be three feet high, for example. But at the end is where I think it's important. So.
Straight up.
It's a street, well, from Mr. Landier's house basically onto the, to the road. The back of his house. That make sense? Yeah. So I, let, let me see if I can make a motion here. I move that we approve this request, uh, based upon the fact that the, that the, uh, crown will not exceed twelve inches from the, from the, that would be the west end of Mr. Landier's property to the road, roadway. Yeah, he can do it, it's. Yeah, it's just, it's a matter of having some, some kind of crown in there.
Just to clarify, you're talking, uh, the crown, the center of the road, driveway cannot exceed twelve inches, or the grade of the entire driveway?
Uh, the, it's center, the center crown. Grading, they want to go far deeper. To get to the, let's see, what, twelve and each twenty and three twenty-three? So they'll want to go eleven, down eleven to get to this buildup. This is a lot of buildup. But you can see why he's doing it, they're doing it for drainage. You know, and you don't want your driveway, nobody's driveway is, is not crowned. I mean, it's just a matter of how much crown does it have? So, in this case, it, it towards the end there where it flares into Mr. Landier's property, I can see why. It looks nice now. And you don't want to change that. You take landscape a lot. If that doesn't make any sense, I'll go out there and I'll get my transit and laser and mark it off. Does that make any sense?
What is the motion then?
Um, that was my whole motion.
Is it possible you could repeat the motion for those of us who've been listening?
This could be my last meeting, you know. Anyway. But we'll have one next week, right? Yeah. And we've, we've got one public hearing next week. I'm planning, huh?
So Roger, we're, we're eagerly waiting to hear your.
Okay, I'll see if I can make this clear, um. I move that we approve the, the, uh, variance. It's not really a variance, it's a deviation from the plan to, uh, um, uh, allow a ten inch driveway with the
Ten foot.
This is a ten foot driveway, ten inches, see, we're back to inches now. Ten foot driveway with two and a half foot side setbacks from the fifteen foot current width. In that when the driveway gets to the back end of Mr. Landier's house and yard, that it, that the grid, that the, the top of the crown will not be more than twelve inches than what the sides of the, of the adjacent property.
Street to the, Mr. Landier's rear yard foundation will be flat?
Uh, no, a twelve inch crown may have max. Probably be disingrate. They were, they might decide they don't even need that much fill in there. That, that seems like a lot for drainage.
There is the twelve inch requirement.
I would say to the, what direction is that going to be, is that, uh?
East would be towards the lake.
Yep, east. The east end of Mr. Landier's house and patio. After that, uh, it can be what's, the, what the proposal is, whatever. I'm not sure, we don't even know what that is. We don't even know what the cross-section would be in relation to the sides now. This says they're going to take that, that's the, the, the. So if we specify that to that part of the property, then the rest of it is not going to matter.
That's an awful long motion.
Yeah, the first part matters to Mr. Landier. Craig, is there any other, if you guys need suggestions on how we might word this?
Well, the driveway's three hundred and thirty feet, so.
Right.
That's going to go to where the, on the south lot line here. Let's grab the bigger picture.
Halfway back, right?
No, three hundred and thirty feet is from here to here.
Right. So it's about half of that.
So Mr. Landier's back from his patio, I would say it's almost to this lot line of the second house to the south.
Yes.
Which would be about two hundred feet. So why don't we make the motion that it cannot exceed twelve inch at the crown for two hundred feet?
Yep. That, that. That, that's, that means the center of the driveway, doesn't mean the edges. So it taper off from there.
Talking twelve inch at the peak center of that driveway can be twelve inches higher than the side of the driveway.
Let's say, let's make it for the entire driveway. Make it simple.
And the twelve inch crown is like that?
The center of the driveway, the center of the driveway, right? It take, and then the crown off and taper from there. It always does, I mean, it has to.
You can't imagine a, a crown being twelve inches on a driveway. That'd be six inch drop from the center.
But they're talking about twenty-three inches. But twelve inches of sand, eight inches of asphalt, and three inches of, of asphalt pavement, that's twenty-three inches that they're talking about a cross-section, right? That's what it, it says.
But if, if they're going to put twenty-three inches in, they can take some fill out.
Right. But. In the middle of fifteen feet. But, but the property's fifteen feet. I wish I had a overhead projector. She wants a driveway paved.
Questions that we still have?
They're going to have to take a lot of material out of there to put the twenty-three inches of material in there. Her driveway already is higher in the middle than it is on the edges for drainage, obviously, till it gets to the end of, uh, Mr. Landier's property. And towards the road, that's when it levels out and it's level with his, his, uh, his front yard. And his driveway too. Which is, all looks nice in there. In the back of this lady's property there too, it all looks nice. Except for the, where the guest keeper dumpstered. But anyway, uh, it's very confusing down there with the power pool. So, uh, if, if, by saying it, see, we got to be careful that if we say we want it to be level with, with Mr. Landier's property, and that doesn't allow for any crown at all. You have to say what that crown should be. So it tapers off. And it looks nice. Yep. Right. The two and a half feet, the two and a half feet, right. Crown can be anything.
Yeah, can we just say it needs to be level at the property line, at the property lines? Versus saying how high the crown needs to be?
It says that the, the edges is two and a half feet. It'd be a level with the current property.
Right.
If you put something in there contingent on not changing the grade on the side yard setbacks by more than two or three inches, I think that would work.
What do you have, Craig? Do you have?
Motion would be to approve contingent on this elevation not changing at the side yard setback entire length of the driveway by more than two inches or three inches, whatever your pleasure.
Let them worry about how high it'll be in the center.
Yeah.
Okay, are we comfortable with that? All right, so that's the motion, Roger, you'll accept as your motion? Is there a second? There is a support. Um, okay, it's removed in second that we recommend this with the, with that contingency. Any further discussion on the matter? Okay, let's, uh, call the vote then. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Okay, passed. Thank you. Yes. All right. We are down to agenda item nine. Discussion Outdoor Service and Dining Draft Ordinance. And Craig sent us a memo about this. Um, remember, we discussed this at the last meeting. At the May fourth meeting, commissioners, uh, scheduled a public hearing on a text amendment to permit outdoor service and dining. Unfortunately, a public hearing was not published fifteen days in advance of the June first meeting. This was my error. The applicant would like to implement outdoor dining this summer. If so inclined, schedule a special meeting to hold a public hearing. The meeting could be held on Tuesday, June eighth, anytime before seven P M. If... I'm sorry.
He said Tuesday.
I'm sorry, Thursday. Thank you. June eighth, anytime before seven P M. Is that enough time for an, uh, an announcement of a public hearing?
It's been published, yes.
Oh, it's been published?
Yep.
So you're assuming we're gonna say yes?
Anytime after eighth, if the plant commissioner's willing to schedule a public hearing, we could do that. If we wanted to do it on June eighth, uh, we could do it anytime during the day if it works for everybody's schedule. All we need is a quorum. I thought we could have some discussion. If you want any changes to the draft ordinance, we could have that discussion now, and then hold a public hearing and then make recommendation to city council.
Sense. So what's your pleasure? Uh, Greg suggested we look at this one more time and also make a decision here about, uh, the date in which we would have this. David has made a few changes in here, I think, in response to previous discussions. I think he threw a couple of other things in here. It looks pretty good to me, but again, the pleasure's yours.
Would Alamo would be in compliance with this? Is outside of it?
What's this, this would apply to what?
Alamo.
Don't, don't, outdoor dining service. Well, to make sure we're not excluding somebody who's already...
Yeah.
...in this sort of... We like the edits that David has inserted here? Is there anything else we'd like to have him insert?
Alcohol service, they're talking about carriers, fences.
That's by inter, that's how I read it. I think last time... Closure, like, is there a fence or something in? He only put something in here about that relative to when there's alcohol sales, and that's okay, because lots of places like downtown, they have outside seating and some of them don't have enclosures, just on the sidewalk. But with alcohol, I think that's special, yeah. Probably the liquor code requires that, probably, yeah. So do we wanna say, do we wanna tell Craig this is, this, the text here is fine for the public hearing? And then do we, do we pick the date here, Thursday, June eighth, and pick a time, or... Is there consensus, we're okay with the text? Should we, should we have a vote on that?
I do have one question.
Sure.
Um, I don't...
I'm, I'm completely a hundred percent all for this. I just wanna make sure we're not getting into any trouble by allowing up to that much space if there isn't that much space to begin with.
Small outdoor space, but a larger in, a large indoor space?
It, it just, it doesn't say, you know, it doesn't talk about like a size or square footage or, you know, length and width or anything like that. It just, it's based on indoor square footage. Um, but I, I'm sure this is all gonna be fine, I just don't see anything written in there, would be my question.
I think this doesn't say you're entitled to have an outdoor space that's equal to fifty percent of your indoor space.
Okay.
And I think this would have to come before our body here, right? Each time? So if they, if, we think they're, they're trying to enclose a much larger area, even though it's less than fifty percent of the indoor space, we can say, no, it's too much, right? So this is, passing this ordinance doesn't give carte blanche authority to someone who wants an outdoor dining area to just do it. It has to be run past us, so we can look at, right? Yeah. Um, let me go back to Alamo has zero indoor space. Therefore, how do they fall into this? I don't see anything that allows for outdoor dining or, like, their kind of operation.
It's called grandfathering.
Player code or something that... Do we wanna adjust, Kay?
It says unless a greater area is approved, approves through a special land use process, so I think it's...
Sentence on to Kay that includes area or...
It'd be case by case anyway. Oh, I think maybe we should, um, have a motion to approve this text for the, um, public hearing?
That, that would be on the next agenda. And to make a recommendation, city council, to adopt the ordinance. Right.
Gonna say this would be what's gonna be presented to public hearing.
Correct.
Yeah, so I think we, we should vote on this, right? This is what we're gonna have for the public hearing? Or you don't think so?
No, I, not necessarily.
Okay, all right, let's not do it then. I'm happy with that. Sure. Uh, so we now need to pick a time for this public hearing. What works for you folks?
About six o'clock.
I'm sorry, what?
I said I'm gonna throw it at six o'clock on the eighth.
Works for me.
Have availability.
Do you have another commitment, but if need be, I will change it.
Don't like to ever go to here.
Right, if we don't, if we're not, if we're close to not having a quorum, I will, I will turn.
Okay. We're down to, uh, item ten, public comments. As I stated earlier in the meeting, uh, at the beginning of our meeting and near the end, we give the public an opportunity to share any additional thoughts that they would like to share with us. So if anyone would like to share any comments with us, invite you to come to the podium, state your name, your address, and share your thoughts. Okay, not seeing anyone stepping up. I'll close, uh, public comments here at eight o'clock. Uh, zoning administrators report?
July meeting is July sixth, the week of July fourth is, are you gonna be around for that meeting?
I am not gonna be here, I'll be in California.
August, but that's always the issue.
So Dave wants to talk about maybe updating the master plan, so we'll have that on the agenda for the July meeting. That's all I had. Thank you.
Chairman's report? No report. Members' reports, comments? Colleagues? Roger? I have one comment, that is, I heard that some of my colleagues talking about the citizen bladder program, and yet they're able to take it online, and I remember back in the day, this is almost twenty years ago, that we used to have to go to East Lansing, and it was nice to have interaction with real people for a day back then, and, uh, but it was for a whole day long, so you have to leave early in the morning or stay overnight, one of the two. But, uh, that's my old stomping ground, so it was easy for me to get in, uh, there. And, uh, I'm glad to see, uh, so many people are involved with that, that, that taking those courses now. Good stuff.
No report.
No reports, okay. Uh, that's adjourned. We're adjourned. Thank you all.